We'll call the June 17th, 2020 City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Bankson, take care of the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come before you today as a city and we ask for your grace, for your help in our times of need. Lord, you said that if we would ask you for wisdom, you would give it to us. Father, we also pray for our nation, as you said, pray for all men, for kings and all that are in authority, that we might lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. Father, direct us through these challenging times that we face on different fronts and help us, Father, to continue to pull together even from places of difference, Lord, to a place that brings unity. And so we thank you for it. Bless our meeting tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the fact of the day, June 17th, 1885, the Statue of Liberty arrives in New York Harbor. On June 17th, 1885, this dismantled Statue of Liberty, a gift of friendship from the people of France to the people of America, arrives in New York Harbor after being shipped across the Atlantic Ocean in 350 individual pieces packed in more than 200 cases. The copper and iron statue commemorated the American Revolution and the century of friendship between the U.S. and France. It was designed by French sculptor Frederick Auguste Bartoldi with assistance from engineer Gustave Eiffel. The statue reached its new home on Bedloes Island in New York Harbor on June 17th, 1885, standing more than 300 feet, 305 feet from the foundation of its pedestal to the top of its torch. The statue dubbed "Liberty and Lightening the World" by Bartoldi was taller than any structure in the New York City at the time. After being reassembled, the 450,000-pound statue was officially dedicated on October 28th, 1886, by President Cleveland, who said, "We will not forget that liberty has here made her home, nor shall her chosen altar be neglected." To this day, Lady Liberty stands proudly as an enduring symbol of freedom and democracy.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, Edward, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mayor, to the agenda.
Okay. First up, presentation on kind of an Arrol recreational district. I wanted to have Michael kind of come forward with the legal aspects of what a recreational district would look like, and then I'll kind of give you the background on the group that tried to put this together.
Good evening, members of the council. Recreational districts are created pursuant to Chapter 418 of the Florida statutes, and their purpose is for, oh, sorry, let me backtrack. So the ordinance is approved by, so the city is authorized to create recreational districts, and they're usually done by approval of a vote of the electors in that district. However, if the electors of the proposed district petition the city to create such a district, and a majority of the electors in the proposed district are in approval of the district by way of the petition, there does not have to be an election or a referendum for the approval of such a recreational district. So a recreational district is created, has a governing body. There are two options: either the district can have its own governing body, or this council can sit as a governing body of a recreational district. That all depends on what the wording of the charter of the recreational district could be. If it is, if the recreational district is to have its own governing body, it has to have at least five members. The charter for the district is created by ordinance of the city council, and the charter will then determine and enumerate what rights and obligations and duties the district has. A recreational district is a public body subject to the Sunshine Law, and its governing body is subject to Sunshine Meetings, and its records are public records for the purposes of inspection under Chapter 119 Florida statutes. Under Chapter 418 Florida statutes, district board members serve without compensation. So the powers of a recreational district are that it may acquire, purchase, construct, improve, and equip recreational facilities. Its acquisitions may be by purchase, lease, gift, or a recreational district does have the ability to exercise eminent domain. A district may issue bonds secured by ad valorem taxes or by pledge of both taxes and other revenues, that is, if approved by the voters of the district in a referendum. It also has the power to operate and maintain its recreational facilities. It has the power to establish, charge, and collect fees for admission to or use of facilities and apply such fees to their operation, maintenance, improvement, or acquisition. It also has the authority to issue revenue bonds payable solely from the revenues derived from its facilities owned by the district, again, if approved by its voters. So, the ordinance, the requirement, any ordinance that is to be adopted by the city is required to, one, have a determination that it is the best method for delivering recreational services for the district, also that this district is amenable for special district governance, and finally, all of the territory in the district will benefit from the improvements in the district. So an ordinance created by this city council for the creation of a recreational district has to have these findings. Those are the legal parameters for a recreational district under the statutes, and so this is the parameters you will be working with in order to determine and to review the creation of a potential recreational district within your authority.
Okay. Any questions for Michael about recreation? I know it's a little bit like CDD, but they're in control, and I think one of the things, you know, that we'll talk about is that recreational district cannot buy all the property, Arrol, that they can only buy the property that is in the recreational district. So if there are acres that would be developed, they can't purchase those properties. It's only, is that...
Correct. It's properties that they will earmark for recreational purposes, and therefore, that's got to be forward, and there's going to have to be such of a justification under its charter. There are, for example, there are several recreational districts that are created, that have been created in the state of Florida. Several of them are actually on the West Coast, but they do manage a lot of the recreational amenities. Some of them, there are certain findings in the statute if a condominium is to create a recreational district, but that's not going to be applicable here, so I didn't want to waste your time going into those details in this matter. But they are really focused on the recreational amenities for the district as is proposed.
And how, again, was the process of choosing the district committee members, the advisory committee members?
Well, the advisory committee, if we're creating an advisory committee solely for the purposes of determining and to conduct a fact-finding mission, the statute doesn't have a requirement for how such an advisory committee is to be created. If the city is going to adopt or appoint an advisory membership for the purposes of fact-finding, then it'll be whatever's the parameters for the city, but Chapter 418 does not have any requirements or minimum standards for the creation of an advisory committee.
So these are, each of these are just people who are interested in it, who have vested interests there and have presented their name, or...
Yeah, they...
I just want to make sure that there's not something where others would feel like, well, wait a minute, I want to be...
No, I want to, I think we should, it's important to divide an advisory committee, which is simply doing the fact-finding to determine whether, whether or not, A, such a district is feasible or not, and what are going to be the parameters of the district, as opposed to the actual governing body of the recreational district in which those members would actually be voted among those electors that reside in the proposed district.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I know many of the names here, great people, I think, are going to do a good job.
And let me just tell you, as far as the list of folks that, everybody was put on the, on the advisory committee, other than, there were three, we had like five from the Villas. I didn't think that was, that would be over-representation, and I think we had five or six from Arrol Parkway. I thought that was over-representation. So I paired those two areas back. Everybody else was, was added to the, to this task force. So, yeah, I guess the distinction that Michael's brought up is there's a distinction between the task force, which is not subject to sunshine, because all we're doing is trying to find the facts. What is it going to cost to rebuild the clubhouse? What is it going to cost to rebuild the golf course? Those kind of things. And then at that point, we take it to the folks that live in Arrol and say, okay, here's what we've determined, here's how much it's going to cost, and here's what, you know, it's going to cost you on a monthly basis for these amenities. And so it's, so we got a fine distinction between, you know, what we're doing as...
Fact-finding and...
In fact-finding and actually, you know...
Correct. Fact-finding advisory committees that are solely for the purpose of fact-finding are not subject to the Sunshine Law because they have no decision-making authority. They are simply gathering the information to be submitted to either a, the potential members of the district. They're also submitting the information to the council for the council to act forward, but as long as the advisory, the advisory committee will not have decision-making authority. It's simply a fact-finding body.
Again, there's some great names on here, and these are great people, and I'm excited to see some forward motion for them.
Yeah, we're, you know, we've, we've been kicking around, we've had like a little five-member group that's been, you know, working with the clients and working with the, you know, with the developer who may or may not, you know, obviously, even though he's interested doesn't necessarily mean he'll get the, you know, it will be up to the recreational district to determine if he's the right developer. I mean, they'll, when it takes over, then it's their responsibility to do that. So, a long way to go, but we, what I wanted to do is at least get you the names, kind of the agenda, and also the, kind of the timeline, because we're, you know, the clients are more than ready to sell the property and...
Just one question. I agree with the names, good list. This says Phase Two. Is Phase One just basically all the advisory components? Is that, because it starts with Week 15 here.
You only got Phase Two?
Yeah.
Look on the backside?
It's both Phase Two.
Oh, I get, we, I'm sorry, we missed, I will get that to you. We must have copied it wrong. Should have been Phase One, Phase Two. Yeah, it's just the steps to get to, to the completion. I don't think I've got them either.
Or is it, yes, it is labeled wrong? Maybe? No?
Well, the dates are...
Because the dates continue, okay.
Yeah, no, okay, I will get that to you. Yeah, I'm sorry. That should have been Phase One, Phase Two, until we're, our first meeting will be on Tuesday.
Right, so bottom line is, there really hasn't been any traction yet. It's all about, it's been exploratory, formation, formative at this point.
Yes.
You're going to have the first meeting, and then whatever findings come, eventually it'll come back to council.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, it will definitely come back to council, yes. Okay. Any other questions about that? Okay. Awesome. All right, next up, public comment period. Susan, we have anybody?
We do have one, one public comment. Okay, man, from Laura Watkins at 355 Lisa Karen Circle. Her concern is, in light of recent events around the country with police brutality and officers killing community members, she would like to propose a community committee to review police policies and possibly review body cam.
Interesting, just talked to Chief McKinley, and he's talking about trying to put something together with Sheriff Mina and himself, and kind of, kind of go over. I know there's also some legislation in DC that looks at some of those issues, and so they're trying to put together a community meeting. Unfortunately, as, you know, the coronavirus spikes, I'm not sure whether we're going to be able to do that in person, or whether that's going to be a Zoom meeting, or, you know, or a Facebook slash YouTube kind of a meeting, but I think that's something that the chief is willing and wants to do, and I think he's reaching out to Chief, or to Sheriff Mina, and so we're trying to put together some, some meeting, probably will be more virtual than in person, which, that's not the way we'd like to do it, but, you know, under the circumstances, that's, I think that's where we want to go.
And, you know, it's interesting, out of, there were eight requests made of our police department, and I talked with the chief, seven of the eight, they already do. So it was really, really exciting to hear that. The eighth one had to do with this request, but it, the way it was requested, it's already in the courts, it couldn't happen that way, but as you already just said, they're looking for a way to be able to do that and still, you know, just give that sense that the community has a voice. So I was really pleased to hear that.
But interesting now, the same group that had the eight, the list of eight items, have now rescinded that and said, that's not good enough, we want to disband all police forces. So it's, it's gone from, yeah, from where, you know, if we can get to these eight steps, we're good. Now, you know, we're, they apologized for saying that was enough, now they want to defund all police. So it's, yeah, it's, it's interesting. Okay, all right. With that, anybody from the public that's here need to speak on an issue not on the agenda? All right. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? If not, look for motion to approve the consent agenda, the three items?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Edward, you want to...
This is, I'm appointing our official delegate for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. If you, as you know, we do this every year, so they, and I think you've received some emails on this, they haven't got all, they haven't put out all their details of how they're going to do their conference, so there's some talk about doing it virtual, there's some talk about some other information that they're talking about putting out as far as travel and stuff like that. But we do have to select a delegate, and so we have to have somebody that will represent us at the annual conference in August, and that will be a person that will have to, you will have to make an appearance. So they are setting up that as a meeting currently, as we sit today. They're, they have that, planning that, their business meeting, they're planning to have that a meeting where the delegates come together to conduct all the business. So basically, here, we're looking for someone who can serve as a delegate.
And taking the mayor's place here, do we have any questions from the council regarding this of Edward? Commissioner, haven't you already handled this office?
I was last year.
And I think you did a tremendous job, so unless someone else would like to take that up...
I'd be more than glad to, unless, Commissioner Becker?
All in favor?
Yeah, so I would, can I make the motion since I'm taking the mayor's place, or do they need to? Okay, here he is. So I'll make a motion that, to accept Commissioner Smith to continue in that role.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next up. Platt Hidden Lakes Reserve subdivision, let's see, who, I guess, is David, you going to take that one for us?
I am. David Moon, Planning Manager, Committee Development Department. Two weeks ago, the city council reviewed the final development plan for Hidden Lakes Reserve, a 92-lot townhome project that's on the east side of Apopka Elementary School. Before you this evening is the Platt, the Planning Commission and the Development Review Committee have reviewed the Platt, found it consistent with that approved final development plan, and are recommending approval of the Hidden Lake Reserve Platt. Address any questions that you have. If you want to see the location of the property, I can pull up the site, but I reviewed this a few weeks ago.
Okay. Any questions for David? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay. Close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the Platt for the Hidden Lake Reserve subdivision.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2744.
Okay, ordinance number 2744. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to residential low suburban for certain real property generally located south of Lust Road and west of Binion Road, owned by Cloutz Farm, Inc., comprising 11 acres more or less, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. David?
David Moon, again, city council is not taking action on this ordinance per Florida statutes on a case of a future land use map amendment that's considered large-scale. Once the state agencies have reviewed that application, after city council has transmitted it to the state agencies, the city has 180 days to hold that second hearing. If the applicant and the city aren't prepared to move forward within 180 days to the adoption hearing, a request can be submitted up to the state for an extension to a date cert. The applicant has submitted a request for extension in great part because of the matters involving Orange County Public Schools and school capacity enhancement, and thus, they've asked for an extension of that second hearing to November the 6th of this year. So that is a request. DRC has reviewed this and has no objection to the extension to the date with, that's a proposed part of the amendment.
Okay, any questions for David? Is the applicant...
Did we correct that date?
What's that?
At the top of the second page, where it says additional comments, I believe that should be 2019.
Oh, yeah.
September 2020 hasn't arrived yet.
Unless you know time travel.
All right, we got it.
On which date is the 2019?
If you look on page two...
Oh, the staff report, okay.
Where it says additional comments, it says September the 20th, 2020. The applicant applied, he couldn't have applied since September 2020. Just make, make sure that date's corrected.
Okay, all right. Top of the second page, yeah, okay.
Okay, we got it. So we'll need a motion from...
I'll move to, move to postpone to November 6th.
Yeah. Yeah, motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry, I don't know if I asked, was anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Okay, the answer is no, so, okay, thank you. All right. Next up, ordinance number 2767, this is the second reading.
Ordinance number 2767. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance number 2709, which amends the adopted Mid-Florida Logistics Park Planned Unit Development, PUD, master plan, for certain real property generally located on the west side of State Road 429, south of General Electric Road, and east of Hermit Smith Road, comprising 189 acres more or less, and owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Warehouses, LTD, GFI Apopka Realty LLC, UCF Hotel Venture 2, BPG, Apopka Properties 1 LLC, and Mid-Florida Logistics Park Home, Park Owners Association, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Okay. David, any changes to this?
No changes.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion from the council to approve ordinance number 2767.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Preliminary Development Plan, DFL 5, Apopka Last Mile. David, Bobby?
Good evening, Bobby Howes, Senior Planner. The preliminary development plan was presented at the last city council meeting two weeks ago. There's been no changes. If you'd like for me to present it again, I'd be more than happy to.
Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Yeah, the only question I would have is, is it required? Because I know in the development agreement that we're getting ready to review, there's reference to off-site improvements for the road, and those wouldn't be captured in this particular plan. Do they need to be, or is the development agreement sufficient?
The development agreement's sufficient.
Okay.
And that'll be presented next by David.
They are captured to some extent because the right-of-way that they pledged to dedicate to the city is reflected in that preliminary development plan. So they already show the right-of-way dedication within the plans.
Okay.
All right. So with, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, development agreement. David?
There's no presentation regarding the development agreement. This is a development agreement with Seafried Properties. They are the applicant for the development of the Lot 3 of the Mid-Florida Logistics Park. So this agreement is with Seafried Properties. This commits Seafried to take certain actions, obligations, to dedicate five feet of right-of-way along General Electric and Hermit Smith Roads to the City of Apopka for future improvements to both of those roads. It also establishes a commitment for improvements at the intersection of General Electric Road and West Orange Avenue. Then it sets securities in place as well that they must provide to the city in the chance they shouldn't complete those improvements. The city can call upon those bonds to complete the improvements. Those are the primary items that are addressed in the development agreement, and the effective date, so that the city council's where is consistent with the ordinance that you adopted this evening, in that it does not become effective, the development agreement does not become effective until there is a closing on the property and a deed that is recorded showing that the property has been sold to the Seafried team. So I'll address any questions that you may have. The Development Review Committee's staff's recommendation is to approve the preliminary development plan for the Apopka Last Mile project and authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement.
Any questions for David?
A couple, I guess, comments. Under the section in the developers' agreement, Section 3 approved off-site improvements, Section A 3, where we're talking about the right turn lane, I think the language needs to be updated because that doesn't seem logical how it's written. So we're incorporating a right turn lane onto northbound West Orange Avenue? That doesn't seem to be plausible. We would put a right turn lane on southbound Orange Avenue, or does it, is the direction there just indicative of this section of roadway? Because it says northbound. So it says incorporation of 185-foot right turn lane onto northbound West Orange Avenue at the intersection of General Electric Road.
And you're asking if it's supposed to say the south side instead of the north side?
Well, southbound, right? Because where, where the Orange Avenue is right there, that's a north, the northbound, you would be taking a left from that roadway.
On to West Orange, if you're going, if you're turning to the right, you're headed towards the east, southeast on West Orange.
Yeah, I'm just disputing the accuracy of that paragraph.
Okay. Would Seafried like to describe that improvement further as you originally presented it? So I let the applicant come and address the improvements.
Good evening, James Taylor with Kimberly Horn for Seafried Properties. So I think the language is meant to imply that the right turn lane is on General Electric. It's headed eastbound to travel southbound on Orange Avenue.
Correct. And so this, where my confusion's coming from is it says incorporation of a 185-foot right turn lane onto northbound West Orange Avenue. That doesn't make sense.
Onto southbound or onto west?
Onto northbound West Orange Avenue.
Onto northbound, yeah, that, that doesn't seem accurate.
And further on in the paragraph, it talks about the north side of General Electric Road as further depicted. So it just, to me, it would be on the south side of General Electric Road, turning right onto southbound West Orange Avenue.
That would be accurate, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that language is updated in the agreement. And it is the intention of the applicant to make these off-site improvements?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing heads nod. The only reason why I asked that is because the way that the developers' agreement is written, it's not as binding as I would care it to be, so I just wanted to get on record that there is intention to do these off, off-site improvements.
Yes, that is correct.
Is there any particular reason why we worded it that way? Where it's not as, and again, I'm not an attorney by any means.
I believe there was some flexibility that was added in the event that some new improvements might emerge, or another developer with another project emerged, and there was an opportunity to make some changes here in the next... to make some changes here in the next few months. If not, they'll be moving forward with these improvements, but that's my understanding why this language was added in case there's another opportunity that could emerge.
Yeah, I mean, and the most advantageous, it's most advantageous for the people that are in that park because they're the ones that are going to be using those particular stretches of roadway anyways, so I just want to make sure that we are committed to getting that done. So, okay.
Any other questions for David? Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the development agreement for DFL 5, Apopka Last Mile.
Should I, should I make the motion and use the language that we need to change that to?
Sure.
Okay. So I would move to approve the developers' agreement with the following language change on Section 3 A 3. Incorporation of 185-foot right turn lane onto southbound West Orange Avenue at the intersection of General Electric Road and West Orange Avenue to permit such construction, city agrees to dedicate as public right-of-way a portion of city-owned land on the south side of General Electric Road as further depicted on Exhibit B.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2769.
Ordinance number 2769. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to city mixed-use, Kelly Park Interchange, MU KPI, and assigning a neighborhood overlay district for certain real property located at 3845 and 4011 Golden Jim Road, comprising of 91.94 acres, more or less, and owned by Cantera Holdings, LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioner Bobby Howell, City Senior Planner. The owners of the subject property is requesting a rezoning of 91.94 acres of property from transitional to Kelly Park Interchange mixed-use with a neighborhood character zone to develop a single-family residential subject subdivision subject to the requirements of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. Property is comprised of two parcels and is located at 3845 and 4011 Golden Jim Road. As you can see, the vicinity map on the screen shows the location of the property. Surrounding zoning of the property, everything in purple is transitioned, meaning it's been annexed into the city, but has not yet received a subsequent zoning designation. And the property is within the one-mile radius of the State Road 429 Kelly Park Road Interchange as you can see on the graphic on the screen. With that said, all properties within that one-mile radius fall under the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. In accordance with the requirements of the Form-Based Code, the owner has submitted a master plan major development plan in conjunction with the rezoning application detailing the development of 282 single-family homes developed in two phases on the property. The plan proposes development of the property with single-family homes ranging on lots with 34 feet in width, which are alley-loaded, 50 feet and 75 feet, both of which are front-loaded. The alley-loaded lots are right here and some of them are right here and here, and the remainder of the lots provided within the subdivision are the front-loaded lots, the 50 and the 75-foot widths. A minimum living area of 1,200 square feet is provided for the alley units and a minimum living area of 1,400 to 1,700 square feet is provided for the front-loaded units. There are no minimum and maximum lot size and living area requirements in the Form-Based Code. Access to the site is proposed via two access points along Golden Jim Road, one on the southern portion of the site and one on the northern portion of the site. Dedication of 15-foot wide strip for future right-of-way needs is dedicated along Golden Jim Road and within this dedication, there'll be a 12-foot bike path, 12 feet dedicated for a bike path that will facilitate the bicycle network proposed within the Form-Based Code area. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross-access to the property to the north at such time that it develops and those connections are located here and In accordance with the requirements of the Form-Based Code, 20% of the total site areas reserved to remain is open space. The master plan major development plan reserves 43% of the site as open space and common recreational elements include a clubhouse with a pool, an internal trail system, a passive open space in recreation areas, a totlock, a dog park, and the dedication of the bike trail along Golden Jim Road. Architectural elevations provided are consistent with those as noted in the Form-Based Code. There are four conditions of approval noted within the staff report as well as in the ordinance and the, one of the major conditions of approval, which is, the motion should be revised to reflect this, is that the applicant is required to obtain all approvals if required, if any, per the Orange County Charter and amended interlocal agreement for public school facility, planning and implementation of concurrency. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, Planning Commission recommended approval at their meeting on June 9th, and staff recommends approval, subject to the applicant obtaining all approvals required, if any, per the Orange County Charter and amended interlocal agreement for public school facility, planning and implementation of concurrency. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for Bobby?
No, just to re-stress the statement that you just made, talking about coordination with Orange County Public Schools, that's a condition for further development and approval.
Yes.
Correct. And then the only other question that I had was, and I think that I, it was in the plan, but connectivity to the south, that's due to institutional use?
Correct.
Non-residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The south is city-owned.
That's where our retention pond.
Reclaimed water pond is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Mayor Nelson, commissioners, my name is Jimmy Crawford. I do represent Parkview Preserve owner Cantera Holdings. I'm an attorney's address is 702 West Montrose Street, Claremont, Florida. We have with us today Jose Cantero, who is the owner's representative, Julie Semus James, who is another project attorney, and Jeff Summitt, the project engineer. We have worked with staff since later last year to get this right and it's been through dozens of iterations based on staff recommendations and we think we got a jam-up plan. I can talk for an hour about how good it is, but we'll just make ourselves available to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion from the council to approve ordinance number 2769.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, she back. Next up, city council reports.
Very excited at our summer youth program, youth jobs program that's moving forward and we had an EDC committee meeting this week and there were several businesses because of what's happened to our economy that had to pull out of that, so they were really needing that, anybody who is watching who has a business. It's a great opportunity to give kids a real opportunity to get their feet wet in the work world and also it's fully funded, so it doesn't cost the business. And so, again, in the past, we've seen some real tremendous things come out of that, not just experience, but some of those have turned into long-term jobs that worked out very well, so I was able to talk with some different ones this week, got about four businesses jumping into the mix there and especially they were looking for construction opportunities and so I know of at least one that's in there, so real excited to see that moving forward.
That's awesome, good. Commissioner Smith?
We're still receiving raving reviews for my graduation that we held for the Apopka High School and so we just want to let everybody know that they would like for us to do that again. It was such a great opportunity, but other than that, everything's going well.
Good. Commissioner Becker? Good, okay. I guess, Michael, you got anything?
No, it's nothing, nothing you to report.
All right, Edward?
I just have one quick thing I want to announce, the budget workshops. So the fiscal year 2021 budget workshops are scheduled for Monday, July 13th, at 5:00 here in the city council chambers, Tuesday, July 14th, also at 5:00 here in the city council chambers, Wednesday, July 15th, at 5:00 here in the city council chambers. So we will have those three days scheduled for workshops for the FY, for the fiscal year 2021 budget. And then, as you know, July 15th, that night at 7:00 is the regular council meeting and that's when we will, we are scheduled to set the proposed millage rate for FY 2021 that evening, so those are the dates of the budget workshops.
Any questions for Edward? All right. Last up, just a couple of quick updates on COVID. You see the report, 32703, let's see, we, we had a spike, I'm sure these spikes were due to when they get the testing back, but you know, it's been from one to, we had 11 yesterday, but it's kind of there, but starting to see some trends across the states, we need to be careful, so just to let you know, we've gone back to kind of full lockdown. All of our, our staff meetings will now be back to Zoom meetings, we're going to be, city hall will be closed down, we were about ready to open up, the police department do fingerprinting, all that, we're going to shut that down, so we're back to, you know, we just want to be, you know, cautious and careful. We've had two, two employees that have tested positive, one from fire and one from Parks and Rec, so we've got all the people that were working with them, we're getting them tested and so far, you know, we haven't found any, anybody other than those two that have tested positive. So, you know, we just, in abundance of caution, just want to, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing and so we're, we're going to, you know, go back to a little more stringent COVID criteria. So last on good news, always like to leave with some good news, I don't know if you start to see all of the, the boxes, I know we had some, some folks are a little nervous about the advertising in, in the boxes at the, over the telephone boxes. Anyway, we've, we've now, I think it's up to 17 of the 22 have been, have been filled out and we're, the average monthly sales price is $383 a month, so we got our first check for, I think it was 1,800, $1,949. So that's been just three months' worth of advertising. So I, I think the advertising is, is something we're not, you know, it's not unacceptably, it's, you know, it's good, it's quality, it's, it's real estate, it's pizza, it's those kind of things. I think, you know, the, the people that we've got on the boxes are good quality people and are quality businesses, so feel pretty good. Their one, the one giveaway was for the DOT was right here at the corner, so right next to the rotary sign, so, but, so it's, it's looking good, I think, you know, I think we'll, you know, hopefully meet those numbers, the $20,000, which obviously will go along the way, or will sure help as we go into the budget year, but, so with that, I think short and sweet, good meeting and we will see you in a couple of weeks.